Let's call the meeting to order.
We're calling possible action on excusing of the absent members. Mayor Andres Hernandez.
President.
Commissioner Lesar Juajardo.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina and Commissioner Ixa Flores. We do have a quorum and we need a motion to excuse.
Look to excuse absent members.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? It passes. Thank you.
Item B, pledge of allegiance and invocation, and we have Ignacio Mezqua.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public where she stands, one nation under God, and visible liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Dear God, we come today to bow our heads and open this meeting in prayer. We ask that you will bless our city and that you will bless our time together today. May we grasp those things that you want us to understand. May our hearts always be ready to respond to you and your wisdom. We pray these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Item two, proclamations. Two, a proclamation proclaiming July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hernandez.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Sevillanes Parks and Rec Director.
Welcome.
Here we got some of our Parks and Recreation Department, some of our staff. And as the proclamation says, it's July is Parks and Rec Month, so we're very humbled and honored to be here and to be recognized. This is kind of the core group of guys. We are missing a couple of people, but it's one of the bigger departments and these are the guys that kind of make it all happen. We we have approximately about fifteen thousand kids in our camps, our programs, after school programs and stuff, so it's a lot of moving parts. And, you know, right now the summertime is very, very, we're probably the busiest that we are throughout the year. But these are the the members that we do have that make it all run, so we appreciate y'all inviting everybody out here and honoring us with the proclamation. I know media did a really cool reel for us that we'll take a look at here in a little bit.
Do you have a video? Great.
Here in the City of Fall Parks and Recreation Department, we want to promote healthy lifestyles. And how we do that is we want to ensure that we're providing the necessary space to get these kids active and to have them in physical activities. And I mean, that's critical in their childhood development.
It's a great video.
Nice.
Very nice. Your staff is, I mean, they're all over the place. I think you're one of the biggest departments we have in the city. Yes, sir. And you impact pretty much all ages, is what I've seen. From pickleball tournaments to the baseball to swimming. Ten, I mean, you guys do so much. It's incredible that the array of programs that you guys are involved with and to be quite honest, I rarely get any. I'm surprised because as big as it is, I rarely get any complaints from the public on your department and its leadership. Just so you know, Sergio, you were representative of the people you picked. They do extremely well and families are happy. So congratulations. You're in a great video. Bobby?
Yeah, just before I read off the proclamation, yes, I want to take my hat off to you all. Fantastic job. I mean, just the other day I was talking to somebody from some of the other cities. And they're like, well, your Parks and Rec, how many people do they service? And I said about ten, ten thousand, because I know it's quite a bit in the past years. But it's grown to be fifteen thousand. That is incredible. The job that you guys are doing here, it's unbelievable. When I told the number ten thousand, they're like, you really have that many participants in the city? I guess we do. I mean, because we offer so much. And we only were able to offer it because of the people that we have running these different events and different opportunities that we're giving to the children. So really thank you all for doing a great job and I don't think I've ever really heard anything negative. And I've been around here for a long time and we used to have a lot of negativity here years, years back. So, you know, I want to tell you congratulations on what you guys are doing. Really, really proud of this organization that you have there, Sergio.
You had a lot of smiling children there. We didn't know if you noticed, but you had a lot of smiling families there. So, great work.
Okay, now let me put on my cheaters. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout the country, including City of Far. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improves the physical and mental health of people, and alleviates illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation programs and education activities such as out of school time, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives, Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, the Far Record, Far recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Therefore, I, Bobby Carrillo, on behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Far, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month. In witness whereof, I have unto my hand and cause the seal of far to be affixed on the nineteenth day of July 2022.
Yes. Congratulations. For your staff?
They wanted to know if we get the day off tomorrow or what.
You're gonna have Sunday off.
Only nonessential personnel.
Item three, public testimony. No one signed up. Item four, public hearings. Nobody signed up. Five, city managers' reports. And we have the A submission of sales tax collection report for July 2022.
This mayor and commission have to report a twelve point seven percent growth year-to-date versus last year, year-to-date, so that's good. The rest of the information is in your packet if you have any questions. Carla is here to answer any questions. Now we'll go over to the second, my second item is that this Thursday, we are celebrating one hundred years of the Fire Department that they have been in existence. It's going to be here, right, right next door to the, in the park here, July twenty first on Thursday, from six P M. to ten P M. There's going to be free food, games, a fire safety presentation. Give us, oh, antique fire engines and fire, give us, what are they? Be loud, I don't know all the terms, fire stuff. I'm a PD guy.
So we'll have antique fire engines there to display for the public to show the history, the progression of the department from when we started to the modern apparatus that we have today.
Pretty cool stuff, so we invite everybody in the community to come out and help us celebrate one hundred years here in Far, Texas.
And make sure you have one of those big, actually his big monitor thing that he used for the movies. So you can play that video for the fire department that I saw the other day. It's actually very impressive. And especially with the girls also that they're looking into going to possibly firefighter role. So it's in the background so that people can see it when they're hanging out there.
Yes, sir, will do. Thank you, chief. Then we want to recognize another great softball team that we didn't get to recognize last meeting. So Sergio, come on up and introduce our guests.
So as the chief said, Mayor Commissioners, this is, these are the, some of the young ladies that weren't able to make it to the last meeting. Y'all want to come up? This is our fourteen U All-Star team. They, I believe they placed third and, you know, I think two weeks ago they were a little bit scattered, so they weren't able to come till today. So we just wanted to bring them in, recognize them. We wanted to thank again the parents, the coaches. Without the parents and the coaches, you know, none of this really happened, so we appreciate mom and dad and our volunteer coaches for taking the time to do what they do with these, with these teams, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I don't know.
Where the coaches? Sin miedo.
Sin miedo, eso es. My name is Marco Antonio Snell. Este, I just wanted to say thank you for having us here. I know you have a very busy schedule. I just want to make sure for every single little girl. They're not little, but they're growing. I just wanted to say I'm very honored and privileged to coach you guys, one and each of one of you. I've known you, several of you girls, since they were seven years old. And I couldn't be more proud of them. They made me proud. I, the only reason, yeah, I coached them because I wish I had a parent that could have done that to me. And every time God go in the field, I feel like I'm playing with them. And for that, even special times for the parents who had the time and effort. And I know sometimes they were a little bit disappointed, but that's what it's a team for, ups and downs. And I just wanted to say, girls, I'm proud of you and I'm hoping you could do this all the time. So, girls and parents, especially the parents, they made a big difference. So, girls, from the bottom of my heart, and surely I'm going to miss you guys. But some of you, I'm going to be there for you guys. So, thank you, guys. And from the bottom of my heart, especially for the parents, thank you so much.
Thank you, Coach. Don't go. Hold on a second. So that way we know, we've never met before, so I want to make sure we get this correctly. So, starting with you, right? You're, what?
Hi, my name is Maria Quintanilla. She's my daughter, Graciela Juarez. I do know a few of you guys, so.
Yeah, so you're a parent and coach, you're both?
Yes, and yes, we also coached the ten U last year, pandemic time, with the boys, because I have a ten-year-old also. So, yeah, I try and get involved as much as I can.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. I started from this side. One at a time, come up and say hi. You can say hello to your parents or introduce yourself so people watching you know, they can put a name to a face. And also say how your friends or boyfriend or whatever, whatever you like.
Hi, my name is Laura Edadia. I play, I'm a catcher, second and third.
Okay, well, good. Welcome. Next.
Hi, my name is Graciela Juarez. My mom, of course, right here.
Got it.
She likes to get involved as much as possible, same with my dad, so I'm very thankful for that.
What position did you play?
Actually, I'm a utility player. I play all around.
Oh, I didn't even know that. Okay.
My main, I'm pitcher and catcher.
Got it.
Hi, my name is Maribel Rodriguez. I play usually all around the field, outfield, second, if they need me to play.
Great.
Hi, my name is Brianna Truino, and I usually play second base or first base, sometimes outfield too.
Great.
Hi, my name is Evie Rodriguez, and I play outfield, center, right and left.
Very nice.
My name is Alisa, and I play outfield.
Outfield, okay.
My name is Daniela Guerra, and I mostly play third base.
Got it.
My name is Angela Martinez, and I play first base.
Good.
Hello, my name is Brian Snell, and I play pitcher and catcher.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Savannah Medina, and I play outfield.
Very nice.
Hi, my name is Justin Aguirre, and I play outfield, sometimes first.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Daniela Caceres, and I usually play outfield.
Very nice. Well, ladies, congratulations. And sports is hard, but it teaches you a lot of lessons, right? Number one, it's not about I, right? It's about you guys as a team. You can't win without, you get independent, depend on each other. Those life lessons will carry over as you move on in your careers and, you know, go to college or technical schools or whatever you decide to do in your life. You're going to, this sporting event always teaches you leadership skills as well. So we hope that you learn a lot from it and you keep staying in it in whatever sports you guys like. Obviously, you're better, better players than we were. I used to play baseball and I don't see anybody with scars like I do because I clearly missed the ball catching it. So you guys have done a successful job and congratulations to you. I don't know if any, the commissioner want to say any words?
I mean, I'd just like to shout out to Coach. Fantastic job. I see that a lot of yous are diverse players. Y'all don't play just one single position. And that's what's key to it. I played baseball at a young age. I played a little bit of baseball out of high school in Mexico for a couple of years. And I love the sport. It's just unbelievable that I see so many that are playing infield and outfield. That's the way you're going to learn the whole game. To be an exceptional baseball player, you have to learn the whole game, not just one position. So what you all are doing and coaches, what you all are doing, I think that's fantastic. That the girls are learning a little bit of everything and that'll take you to the next level, especially some of you are probably already getting, what, eighth, ninth grade? Ninth grade, so you're going to be going into the freshman baseball and JV baseball. Some of you will probably make it. So, you know, just congratulations and keep up the good work. And it's all about team. It's all about team. Never, it's never about me. Always remember, it's all about team.
If I may?
Just to remind you guys, baseball and softball, it's a game and it's always about having fun, you know? And win or lose, always remember when you're on that field, it's always about having fun and, you know, enjoying the game and enjoying the moment, you know? As you get older, you know, whatever you decide to do in life, you know, you got to enjoy what you do in life. And baseball is a great thing to, you know, to, to learn and enjoy. It's a game and have fun.
Congratulations, ladies. If you look behind me, what do you see? That's right. We understand the importance of playing as a team. We also, we're also a team and we're playing for the City of Far, just like you do. So, you know, I'm very proud of you. You represent the City of Far. Congratulations.
Yes, sir. One more? All right. Can you come say hi? Say your name.
Introduce yourself.
And the position. So people are watching.
And you have to sing a song.
Hi, I'm Camila Guerra.
Hi, and what position do you play?
I'm the catcher.
You're the catcher? Okay, good. Well, good. Okay, well, great. Well, for the, for the parents, right? El Papa Gracias, we know we make sure when you guys go home, you thank your parents, right? Because none of this would be possible without your parents. Not every parent can go and attend, but at least they're allowing you. If they didn't go, trust me, they would love to be there. But some have jobs, some have two jobs and they have to support you guys. But remember, without your parents, you wouldn't be here. And the City of Far will always be here for its students and for its population to be sure you guys have great access to multiple activities. And it's just one of many important ones. So on behalf of the City of Far, we want to thank the parents, sus papas gracias, for letting you participate. And we're very proud of all of you. You're already off to a good start. Don't stop and I, all of you can make it. No más chileganas. Congratulations to you guys. Yes. Oh, sure, come on up, Coach. Great.
Yes, I'm Jessica Arial. I was a high school coach for about twenty years. And just one thing I wanted to tell the ladies is, I never saw them, you know, you're talking about being a team. They actually were a team. And they saw them get on each other. There was no fighting or bickering or things like that. That, that's how, why I think we got, where we got.
That's right.
Was because of that, because we were a team, just like the team of Far. These were a true team of Far, just like you guys. And we appreciate everything you do for the city. Thank you for recognizing us.
Come on up.
And backing us up.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Good. And don't go, ladies, and go away because we're standing here. Are you going to take a photo of them? Are you going to take a photo of them? Si, bueno, mueve el podium y la ponas acá. And we'll stand here and we'll just have two rows with them because there are a lot of students or players here.
Mexican. Do you know? Baseball in Mexico.
Whenever you want to turn the meeting.
We're after, sorry, after your consent.
I have no doubt.
I have one more. Quick item.
All right.
Yes.
All right. All right, we'll go ahead and get back to my fourth item. Thank you, Sergio, and thank you, Coach, and to all the All-Stars. One last thing, we have a couple of new directors I want to introduce to the commission. Ruben Alfaro, would you come up here real quick? And Rodrigo Dabila. Ruben is our new city engineer. And Rodrigo is our new public works director. Just real quick, come on up here and introduce yourselves.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ruben Alfaro. I'm the new city engineer. I come back to the city. I was in the engineering department five years ago. I went to Texas and I'm coming back to serve you guys.
Man, you're like a little kid. How old are you?
I'm thirty years old.
Right? Okay, well, good. Well, welcome back. We're glad to have you back. You know, you're, you have a great team, by the way, just so you know.
Yes.
You have Maria and everybody else in there. I mean, they're outstanding team, so I'm sure you're going to find that leading them will be relatively easy.
Yes.
And welcome again to City of Far.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Anybody have any comments, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Rodrigo, come on up.
Hello, Mayor Commissioners. Miss Attorney, my name is Rodrigo Dabila. I'm your Public Works Director. I am a transfer from the City of Harlingen. Before that, I was with the City of San Benito. Before that, I was teaching at TSTC Engineering Technology. And before that, I was the nine-one-one coordinator for the state and Cameron County for thirteen years.
Really?
And so I am, I'm sorry it took me so long to get here, but I'm here with Andy and I look forward to working with the, with the city and then keep it going. I apologize for, for my casual look. My mentor said that it was okay. I'm finding out it was not. And so I'll be better prepared next time.
Yeah, we'll beat him with a stick in a little bit. Don't worry.
Please, sir, I, I want to be first in line and second and third.
Yes, sir. Welcome back. Tell me about the nine-one-one position you had before.
Yes, sir.
Can you expand on that? What were you doing?
And so the, in nineteen eighty-six, the state legislature created mandate to replace all rural route addressing for physical addresses. So it's basically the nine-one-one system or the enhanced nine-one-one system. So I came to Cameron County in nineteen eighty-nine and I was given that assignment. They told me it was going to last about two months. It was actually eleven years. And so basically what I did is I created the mapping that we use today. I was the first one in the
For the postal service.
For the postal service for nine-one-one is the same one that we use here in Idaho. I was just happened to be the first one to do it for Cameron County and the state. We created the, the format of pictometry, which everybody knows now as Google Earth. But it was pictometry for nine-one-one. You'll see it in every dispatch center. And I was lucky and proud to be the first one to do that.
Well, welcome, sir. Glad to have you.
Glad to be here.
Thanks, Rodrigo. And those are our new directors. So Ruben is from Texas. Rodrigo's from Harlingen and Kimberly back there, y'all met her. She's from Medingberg. So we're, we're bringing them to Far.
Great. Going to executive session, Alfred. Is that what you want? All right. And according to section five-five-one point zero seven one to five-five-one point zero eight seven of the Texas Government Code, the Fire Board Commissioners should write gives notice that it is convening into executive session to discuss items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, time being four-twenty-six. The time is five oh three. We're back in session, open session.
Item six, consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
Look to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes.
Item seven A, under ordinances and resolutions, consideration and action if any on ordinance regarding Texas Gas Service Company cost of service adjustment filing, adoption on first reading.
Just Ruben, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes.
Item seven B, consideration and action if any on ordinance, amending ordinance number O dash twenty twenty-one dash fifty-two for budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget, and this is adoption on one reading.
Yeah, Mayor and Commission, the staff's recommending to table this item.
Move to table. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Table.
Under purchasing, item eight A, consideration and action if any, authorizing city manager to award a purchase contract for the repair and rehabilitation of manholes in the City of Far from Southern Trenchless Solutions out of Lafayette, Texas through buy board contract number six-three-five dash twenty-one in the amount of one hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Listen to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Hilda, why don't you come up to the podium instead? That's, Mike seems to be a little bit
Problems.
Problematic.
Item nine, contracts and agreements. Better? A, consideration and action if any on memorandum of understanding between City of Far, Far International Bridge and South Texas College for certified customs specialist program.
Most approve?
Move, move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes.
Item nine B, consideration and action if any on professional services agreement with Fries and Nichols engineer, engineers to conduct a title sixteen watersmart feasibility report for the City of Far.
Listen to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Thank you.
Item nine C, consideration and action if any on professional services proposal from Fries and Nichols engineers to expand the current City of Far certificate of convenience and necessity, CCN.
Listen to approve. Second.
Oh, you didn't, yeah, we're supposed to Oh, you didn't, yeah, we're supposed to. What item are you on right now?
Item C.
9D. Correct?
9C.
9C, okay. I'm just having a hard time hearing. I'm sorry. So 9, 9C. Is that correct?
Yes.
9C, correct? As in Charlie?
Yes.
Okay. First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Item, item, item 9D, consideration and action if any on professional service agreement with Fries and Nichols engineer to conduct a groundwater supply engineering feasibility study for approximately 240 acres.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 9E, consideration and action if any authorizing city manager to negotiate an amen contract with City of Far's construction management firm for oversight and inspection of the Mexican portion of the twin, twin bridge expansion project as requested by the Far International Bridge Board.
No, no, Mayor Commissioner, staff's recommending to table this item.
You want to amend your approval to table?
The motion, and now, a motion to table item. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes this table.
And now we have adjournment. Adjournment.
Oh, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, man.